Okay, welcome, everyone. We are back. This is, even though we've been doing this all day long, we are technically in a separate meeting. This is a public, this is a budget public hearing that we are holding after hours. We've already had all of our call to order and invocation and pledge this morning, so we're just going to push right into the, the general meeting this evening. Dr. Hopes, if you'd start walking us through the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, our CFO, Sheila will come up and present to you the final budget for adoption tonight at this public hearing. Sheila. Our famous CFO.
I don't know about that, but thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Administrator, and County Attorney. Today, we are ready to adopt a budget for Manatee County. I know that I am very excited about this. This has been a long process, but all my staff have put a lot of hard efforts to get this moving for the sake of Manatee County. Today, the goals of this meeting, one is to do revisions.
Sorry, I know it was like a good.
Charlie's gonna fix that.
Scared the heck out of us. Sheila, are you okay?
Yeah.
We gotta get out of this, right? I don't know how we gonna get out. Exactly.
Ms. McLean, carry on.
Thank you, Chairman. So today, the goals of this meeting are to do revisions to the tentative budget towards the adopted, update, update you on the reserve balances, talk about the capital improvement plan, the changes that have happened. So the IST, Public Hearing of Changes, as required by Resolution 18-130, and then talk about a timeline of the, towards budget adoption. And then finally, to do the motions to approve the resolutions and adoption, final adoption of the budget. The total tentative FY23 budget, gross budget for Manatee County is $2,358,762,650. This is the number that will become approved, adopted on today. The net budget is $1,724,195,850. As we discussed in the last previous public hearing on September the 7th, you all voted for a reduction of point, an additional reduction of .10 mil. So I bring to you from the tentative the change, because I said I would come back and tell you what was the, the new number that reflected this change, and that is reflective of the new change. As we move into adoption, as you can see, the numbers did not change. I had already sent you on Friday a memo that detailed this information as well. The FY23 budget changes that happened from the tentative, as it related from the September 7 meeting, was a, an impact of the .1 mil reduction, which created an additional reduction monetary of $5 million. The impact on this was only on the general fund and against the stabilization reserves. As the highlights of the business operations budget for the FY23 adopted budget, the first item is to, to note is the military reduction totaling a .30 mil with a monetary value of a reduction of $15 million with an impact to the general fund. We also are adopting 55 new positions, of which 17 are to staff the new library at Lakewood Ranch. Five positions are for 911 telecommunications at public safety. 16 of them are for utility technicians positions, two guardian at light and positions, one case manager and one attorney. Moving forward, we have fully funded the sheriff for 100% for a total amount of $172 million. An increase of the health insurance of an 8% on both the employee and the employer. Salary compensation increase of 8%, 5% of it is cost of living, 3% would be towards pay for performance and merit. And an investment of, to cybersecurity for an additional $3 million. Our adopted military for the FY23 budget is 6.2326, which as you can see from the tentative, that already reflects the entire .3 mil reduction from 6.5326. Let's talk about a little bit of the reserves. I said that I would come back to you and I would tell you what would the impact reflect on the resource. For the, the only one that actually had an impact on all these four, four different type of reserves was the cash balance after the change of the .1 additional. I had already explained before what the changes were. As you can see, the name, the difference prior from proposed to tentative, from tentative to adopted, nothing else had been changed, nothing else had been adjusted. Again, reminding yourself that we are still meeting that reserve for contingency 10% cap at a 3.8%. And we are meeting a reserve for cash balance of the 20% cap at 18.2%. For the resource with the change of the, of the additional .10 totaling a .30, the general fund ends up with a stabilization fund of 3.9 with the total amount of reserves of 80 mil, 80.8 million dollars, for a total of reserves on cash balance from plus stabilization of $574.3 million. Let's talk about the capital improvement plan today as we are approving. The capital improvement plan totals $1,202,154,734. An investment in FY23 of $320,76,635. The total investment on the entire FY23 to 27, inclusive of existing projects that already have appropriations, is $2.3 billion. We have 589 total projects in the CIP, of which 43 are new projects. 262 of those projects have additional funding. 327 are in flight and have no additional funding. And 127 of those projects are infrastructure sales tax. In the capital improvement plan, I had added, I had given you a couple of handouts that are of importance for you to have. One is the resolution, R22156, which gives you a couple of, of the, of pages. On page seven, it totals, it gives you the total sources and uses, the, on the projects only with funding. On page nine, you have Appendix Three, which shows the changes that happened in the CIP from, from proposed to adopted, because in the tentative, we didn't do any other changes, which I will talk to you about it. There was some changes, but those were already on, from budget, budget, board meetings that happened from the first meeting that we had all the way to now, because they actually had an impact on the CIP. Page 17 of this resolution lists all the projects by category, all 589 projects. And then page 41. The one, oh, sorry, I'm going to restate. The page 17 only restates all the projects that, by category, that actually have additional, that have funding, additional funding. And then on page 41, then you have all the sources and uses that are to be used for the CIP. This is one handout. The second handout is only an itemized of what the CIP changes were. It's a little bit more of a cheat sheet, rather than looking at like 57 pages on the resolution we did for you, so you can see all the, all the projects that, that had changed from beginning to end. The second one is all 43 projects that are new, new to the CIP. And then the next one is all into the IST. This one, we have to actually show you what changed, because it's a requirement of the public hearing for the IST. It all becomes part of the adoption process. It's one way of skipping a step on doing it outside of the, to show you what the changes that had happened. This is all for your leisure reading. The IST, the changes that really happened, I want to explain to you really well, is that nothing was changed without board approval. All the meetings that happened from the proposed, from the recommended and proposed, were changes that were brought forward on all those budget meetings that have happened in FY22 from that day forward. So we, also, we restated our cash, so that it would be closer to bring it in into FY23 for a better source, source, and sources of funding representation. I would like to highlight some of the projects that actually have had some impact in this, in this CIP. As one of them would be the Premier Sports Complex Swimming Pool. We have updated the size to a 50-meter pool for a total of $18.3 million. We have updated the animal shelters projects. The Bishop Shelter received an additional fund, funding for a total of $6 million funded out of the IST. And the East County Animal Shelter remained at $3 million funding from the IST and contributions. Canal Road Projects were divided into four segments to realign the project boundaries and look for efficiencies. The Lakewood Ranch Library, estimated completion date December of 2023, for a total dollar, a value of $17.7 million. These other three projects that you see on the bottom for Fort Hamer are, are in the projects of record, because, because they have some SWIFT mod and some FDOT grant funding, as it was required, we needed to bring it forward into the CIP, even if it was in the projects of record. The total funding will be identified later and brought forward. As Chad had identified in his, in the previous meeting, there are these big six projects that are out there that have high impact. And he had talked about his new system, the hub, that can, it actually maps out all the needs of the project, where they are, their status, and locations, and so forth. Our, our approach of these big six is only on the financial summary side of it. It's presented in the mymanatee.org, and then from there, it's linked, linking into the public works site where all the mapping is done. So all of there is, it's kind of like goes from financial summary, so you can see all the mapping as well, and so forth. I just wanted to bring it out. Now, I would like to talk about the infrastructure sales tax. To meet Resolution R18130, this budget hearing during the, during the adoption process serves to meet the requirements as per this resolution, when the changes are made related to scope changes, category and percentage changes, additions and deletions to the project and equipment list. The changing in funding that happened were three increase, three project increased in funding. We had 10 projects that were project deletions, whether we, we found additional funding sources somewhere else, so it kind of like to the funding outside of the IST. Or therefore, more efficiency, some projects were reduced to one project rather than, than too many. Also, we had a, a name change on, on two projects. Cape Vista Drive and the District Five Substation at Premier. We also have a subcategory change, which was better suited in the other categories, the Washington Park Phase Three, from District Parks and Aquatic Facilities to the Environmental Preserves and Boat Ramps.
Can I ask a question there?
I have two people on the board. You should, a quick something?
I don't know if that's gonna be quick, Mr. Chair, but it's about the Washington Park Phase Three.
How much, how much further do I have to go? Yeah, let's wait till the end, because I have three commissioners on the board now. Okay.
Okay, there was a third scope change on two projects. 26th Avenue East from 27th Street East to 45th Street East, and the 60th Avenue East, US 301 to outlet mall entrance. It was just, the scope was modified to better serve a little bit more of a broader scope. And then the other one was the Moccasin Wallo, it was a scope change on the Moccasin Wallo Segment One, same thing to align better the description with the project in itself. So in the, any questions on the CIP?
Yeah, why don't we stop for a second and go to Commissioner questions? Whitmore, Van Austinbridge, Bellamy, Satcher, although I think I'll take myself off, because I, I think you just misspoke, I found the correct number in the, in the book. So Whitmore, Bellamy, Satcher.
Okay, sorry. First of all, Lakewood Ranch Library, 17.7 million. That's just the downstairs part, right? The upstairs is empty shelf.
Yes, the second floor is a different, is outlined, that's a different project, yes.
Maybe our service is up there, so I'm not sure what's going up there, but nothing, so that would have to be over and above the budget, the 17.7 million, really. At one point, we talked about the CVB having something up there, but I don't know what's going on, so I guess you'll find out. Angel, the, you said that no positions were take, changed, but I know the administrator took out the IG two positions. Are we gonna?
They were never in.
But they were asked to be in.
They were requested.
They were asked to be in, and the administrator chose not to put them in, correct? That's what he's told me, right? So we're not gonna put them in?
They recommend, on the June 8th, you rec, they recom, the, it was flagged only to bring back the salaries.
I thought the whole department was flag.
The recommendation for not funding the Inspector General stayed behind.
Oh, I remember the whole department being flagged, the whole thing being flagged, and then we never had another meeting. So we're not adding the Inspector Generals, correct?
No, but she did receive the, an accountant and two other positions.
Right, exactly, but she did ask for the Inspector Generals, and we said no, for some reason, okay. Extension services, I know you got all these emails today, I've talked to Scott a couple times. Ms. Snodgrass resigned. Is there, are we not gonna be doing extension services, because we pay 40% of their salaries? So that is a budget thing. What are we doing? And can you tell the board what you're doing, Mr.?
Extension services is funded.
You've told me twice now. When we've had our briefings.
Madam Commissioner, the extension services in the budget, we haven't changed anything about the extension service.
No, but you're meeting with the college about possibly doing.
No, I, I don't know how all this stuff gets spread, and I hope you're not spreading it, because we haven't proposed any changes to the extension service.
I wrote a letter, my email, that included it. That's where people heard about it, because you've told me about it twice. I'm fine, because it's been in existence since.
So you are spreading it.
Hold on, it's been in existence to the, since the 30s. So we're not, we're gonna keep them at, hold on, we're gonna keep them at the fairgrounds, correct?
There has been no discussion, no proposal at moving them, changing their funding, or anything.
Or the state.
I met, I met, I met with the, the extension from University of Florida at the fact meeting.
Well, no, you had told me you were meeting with them. Okay, well, I got the misunderstanding then on that one, so I apologize.
Nice to not put it in an email for the public.
Whatever I want in an email, when you tell me something, I write it down. So remember, I'm your boss, you're not my boss. Okay, EMS and 911, that's all settled, right? One of them is now in a union, but we can't do anything with their salaries until that's negotiated with your attorney, correct? Mr. Hopes?
I'm sorry, I thought we were on the CIP, but that's.
I'm going through the budget, because I tried to bring this up at the last meeting, you told me I had to bring it up today.
So your questions about union negotiations?
No, I'm asking about the salaries. Are they on hold until he does his thing with, because 911 just entered.
Their, their salaries are budgeted at the, the current levels with the 5%, the, the increase in 3% for pay for performance, and it will be subject to union negotiations.
And this is budget, guys, and I've never, I mean, we've always been able to have work sessions, so we don't, we haven't had any, so. Did we hire a media firm? I saw that in a article, but I don't think we have.
Oh, we have not.
Okay. It wasn't on there. I didn't enter that.
I mean, you're reading things in newspaper articles?
I actually did not read, write this in my email. Please be respectful, I'm still your boss, please. Eighth floor, eighth floor media room, have we redone that? And that was probably in Charlie's budget, right? Because somebody asked me, and I said Charlie has a budget, Charlie Bishop. So we could have remodeled the eighth floor media room, and that's okay, correct? I've told the public it is. We have eighth floor, can you guys let me finish, please? The eighth floor, we renovated our media room. Is that under Charlie Bishop's reserves, probably?
I, I think you're misspoken, we did not renovate the eighth floor media room.
Yeah, our guy that does our videos.
It's not on the eighth floor.
Same, yeah, this is about budget. I haven't been able to talk to anybody about it, that's why I'm here. Okay, so you're not answering that question?
No, I said, we did not renovate a, a media room on the eighth floor. I, I don't know where you get this information.
I read that one in the newspaper last week, too.
Well, I would stop reading whatever newspaper you're reading, because it's misinformation.
Well, if you'd meet with us, okay, Home Speech Law Enforcement, yeah, you, I know. Home Speech Law Enforcement, did we fund that one? I think we did, right, Sheila?
It is in the budget, yes.
Thank you. The dam, I heard from somebody, maybe it was you, that the cost went down from, or maybe it was our deputy county administrator, that it went down from maybe we thought about 30 million, it's like in the T, like 18 or 20 million. Had you heard that?
I, I am not aware of.
Okay, I heard that yesterday from Courtney. Did you hear that? Okay, Courtney, Courtney told us in our briefing. So that's good, because we had prepared for more. You told us about the reserves and FEMA, we brought this up at the last meeting, but we were kind of cut off. You expect repayments in about two or three years. And what about the, the salaries for all the employees is 8% or it's 5% and a 3% performance, correct?
5% allocated to cost of living increase, 3% for a combination of pay for performance and merit increases.
Okay, and that includes everybody except with you, with your, not your contracts, we had done it different, correct? Including our deputies?
Upon approval, there'll be a memo and a video going out that describes that if they received, employees that received a, a competitive salary adjustment during the period of time, they would not get the cost of living increase.
And I'm glad that we gave the, as much of an increase as we did for the employees, because it's much needed. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bellamy, hopefully you were briefed on the budget before you got here, sir.
I just have a question, Mr. Chair, as far as language, from District Parks and Aquatic Facilities to Environmental Preserves and Boat Ramps, as far as the Washington Park Phase Three.
What page are you on, sir? On the change in name and scope, page fif.
16.
16?
It was also on, it's right here on, on the screen as well.
16. Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, now, I just wanted to kind of explain that to me, is what that change means. It's not a nimbge's change, it's a terminology change, and some, that's what it say. Right, so with the.
And scope.
Yeah, with the terminology, there's something different, I just want to make sure it's clear, unclear.
It's not a name change, it's a category change. So it was moved from the this, this District Park and Aquatic Facilities, because it really didn't fit, the scope, as you read it, didn't actually fit in that category as well as it fit on the Environmental Preserves.
Are we, is, is that the scope change that addresses the environmental issues at Washington Park?
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's why the change, thank you.
It's a, it's a D.
Thank you.
Washington Park has many funding sources, and this one in particular is the one that's addressing that issue.
Is that all, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Satcher, were you briefed on the budget?
Please, Mr. Chair.
It's a legitimate question, you weren't briefed on the budget, I'm just making sure everyone was briefed.
Not with all the questions that I asked, no, I was held off last time.
Not with all the questions that I asked, no, I was held off last time, wasn't allowed to talk about it.
I think you're the only one being, no, you're the only one being briefed these days, I feel like, but maybe I'm wrong.
No one talked to you about the budget in eight months?
No, in eight months, I definitely talked about it. So, okay, looking at page seventeen, the outlet mall entrance.
Yeah.
And it sounds like we're, which is at 301 and 60th Avenue East, and it sounds like, if I'm reading that correctly, we are changing the scope of that project to Moccasin Wallow Road.
I have Chad here, and he can.
That's a long way, those two are not close to, I mean, they're close, but not very.
Weren't you briefed?
Thank you, that reminded me, I just want to make sure. The biggest issue here is we had a constructibility issue with the 60th project, at a previous budget, a couple of years ago, we included what was known as the 60th Avenue's missing link, to get from essentially Travesta south to Mendoza and connect it up, so you could make it all one project from, I mean, one passage of road from 301 all the way to Moccasin Wallow. Too big of a job, in sense of as far as bidding, so what this act is doing is it's creating three projects. We're taking essentially from Mendoza down to 301, and then Mendoza up to the Travesta portion, and then the intersection of Buffalo Road and 69th is kind of, we call it Segment Three, but it's essentially that intersection to add the signal there, to make it a plausible crossing. That segment, Scott, one or two for the signal at Mendoza?
Three. Oh, I'm sorry, two.
Segment two would be the one that has the signal at Mendoza Road, so it makes it all plausible, it just allows us to bid and construct and move things along in three separate packages.
But not three separate years? Would that, will they all go concurrently, or?
They're all going as fast as they can, each, just like the Big Six, each will get to the finish line in a different time, given their scale and their complexity. The signal, we hope to bring to you via C-MAR a little bit later this fall, when I say the signal, Segment Three, at 69th and Buffalo, to install that. We expect to bring that to you in October, early November.
Okay, but you're not short on funds for the three segments that we're now calling it, correct? I mean, obviously, things change, but I'm just saying, do we have, is the CIP addressing those projects? Even if we're changing scopes because we want to be able to take bids, that's fine with me, but if they're falling off to future years, two years and three years?
No, sir, this is just splitting the existing projects with the same schedule.
Just saying, this project was way too huge to do one.
Correct, sir.
Going out to bid. And then, just real quick, when we, the first time, I forget the name of it, but the first time the movie theater became a, an apartment complex, we were talking about how far along 60th Avenue East was, and the answer was pretty far along, that we had design, and I mean, that we were really close on that. Is that still accurate?
That was probably not that accurate back then. It was making decisions on where we wanted to go with that road. That road really has taken shape in the last twelve months with the clarity from the board that eminent domain is something that we're going to have to use and move forward. We spent a couple of years analyzing a lot of things of how not to eminent domain, the old Kmart site has been something that's been tried to avoid for an awful long time, and it, we have looked under every rock, it is not possible without it. And now, it's moving forward with the same intensity and method as the Big Six projects, as far as, Scott can tell you, we're expecting the alignment and when, and bring that forward.
Probably next month or two.
60th, the alignment, that would be one of those precursors to get ready for eminent domain for 60th, 301 to factory shops.
It'd be expensive.
We're expecting to bring you the alignment to bless it and start paving our way for eminent domain on that segment.
Okay, thank you. And we realize with 60th, there'll be a lot of business damages for the first segment one, because of all the stuff we're talking about with the Kmart, so that one will probably be one that takes a little bit longer to get, but we think the intersection at 69th is one where we can acquire and do that work fast first and quicker, and then the second phase is just dealing with one property owner, so we think that will also go reasonably quick.
Yeah, this facilitates getting these projects completed.
And at the same time, Commissioner Satcher, all three of these ones have different funding sources, so like the Segment Three is covered by the IST, and the other ones have potential impact fees and other sources.
Commissioner Bellamy.
I wanted to know, as far as the segment where Travesta is, where you said easier crossing, you were talking about a light there, are you referring to as you're going across that bridge on 69th, headed like to Buffalo Creek, are you anticipating a light there? Is that what you were saying?
Currently, at the realigned Buffalo Road, so it's realigned on the north side.
Right, right.
And then, on the south side, Travesta has their pretty entrance a little bit to the east, but to the west of there, that's 69th, à la Buffalo, not 69th, 60th, Buffalo Road, that's that intersection where we need to signal at, to make it viable that this thoroughfare can cross 69th safely and provide a good path up to Moccasin Wallow.
So, and I thought that might be a good idea as far as light, and I apologize, it's not that much budget, it's just my thought, coming across that bridge right there, you're going to put a light, is that what you're all saying?
Yes, so it'll be a light right next, there's two lights total in the project, one is 69th and Buffalo Road, there'll be a signal placed there, there'll also be a signal down at Mendoza and 60th where that is. Yes, there'll be one coming off, but as we do, we usually put warnings and things for where those lights are coming in.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is your district?
Yes, sir.
Without getting into it now, you should look into a roundabout there, but whatever. But I don't want to get into it now. Well, I'm just thinking, it would be safer coming off the bridge, right? It would be safer coming over the bridge, which is what Commissioner Bellamy was pointing out, and he's right. And I feel like there's a lot of right of way there. Anyway, okay, so no other commissioners are on the board, then let's move forward with public comment, and Mr. Clegg, are we safe to have public comment on essentially all of, I lost my agenda?
I think so, the critical thing by statute is, before you can take any measures, make any motions, you have to take public comment.
Right, but I wanted, I was hoping to do one public comment, and that would suffice us for all of these agenda items, because they're related.
I think that's fine, but if somebody needs more time, I would ask you to exercise your discretion in favor of giving them whatever time they need to address all the items that are in front of the board.
Okay, so then, when it comes to this budget hearing in general, we're going to hold public comment at this time. So, anyone who would like to come forward, I have two names first, let me get myself organized here, I apologize. We have two people who have submitted, one is Brian Hall, and we'll start with Brian Hall, and then, the second one after Brian will be Sharon Kruger, I believe, Sharon Kruger from Palmetto, there we go. So, we'll go with.
If you have more, address my question.
Okay, wonderful, so Mrs. Kruger will be taken off the list, but Mr. Hall, we'll go with you first, sir, and then after that, we'll open it up to anyone in the audience who would like to come forward. Any of you approach the podium would like to have you do is state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to speak on budget items. Go ahead, sir.
Brian Hall, Manatee County, I'm the lieutenant for the Home Speech Police Department. I just had a quick statement on behalf of the city and the police department regarding the police funds. So, last year, the city received about forty-six thousand dollars from the county for the contract for providing police services at the Manatee Public Beach and for Kingfish Boat Ramp. This year, the city asked for an increase, and we were told it was not budgeted. We have supplied the county with monthly reports showing an increase of activity at the public beach and the boat ramps in which we are contracted to provide services. We are asking that if the county does not raise the amount funded, that they leave it at what the previous year's rate was. Any reduction in funding would further defund the police in the area, so thank you in advance for voting to continue funding for the police services, and thank you for your time.
Okay, guys, here we go.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on budget matters this evening? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to the phone. Has anyone called in to speak and public comment today?
We have one caller at this time, caller eight zero four, eight zero four.
Okay, caller, as you press star six to unmute, please state your first, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Mr. Mehan.
Who's it?
It's eight oh nine.
Caller, press star six to unmute.
Mike Mehan, Manatee County, resident. Thank you for the point three mill, over the last two budget cycles, you have cut the millage by point five, which is a significant achievement, in my opinion. I'd like you to consider another point two eight cut, which exactly offsets the environmental land increase of point one five, and the virtual millage increase of point four three, caused by the three percent homestead property valuation increase. It would cost a little under fifteen million, which is easily covered by four hundred million of excess reserves currently held that are above Florida statute. Speaking of reserves, an easy way to measure Florida statute compliance is to multiply the budget of one million, or one billion by point three. This equals three hundred million, and is the maximum amount of reserves you're allowed to hold. Attracting unrestricted reserves on the books of seven hundred and four point one million leaves four hundred and four point one million of excess reserves, which should either be spent or returned to the taxpayer in the form of a check or a variable property tax credit. Finally, consider asking the Manatee County delegation in Tallahassee to promulgate a bill to allow restricted reserves above a five-year annual spending average to be converted into unrestricted reserves, which can then be used for any county purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other callers?
No more callers.
Okay, we're going to close public comment. Commissioners Cruz and Servia are on the board. Commissioner Cruz.
I forgot what I was going to say.
You forgot what he's going to say? Well, we'll come back to him. Commissioner Servia.
Oh, wait, I remember.
Oh, you're kidding, of course you did.
This is clarification, I thought we did clarify, I thought we did fund the Home Speech Police request.
Did.
So, I was.
Hope his boss had come up probably.
He was thanking us for maintaining their funding at the current level.
Oh, okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure, because that was a discussion, I thought we shot that down, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, okay.
Yeah, we did.
It's nice of him to thank us for something.
I didn't hear that. Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you. Sheila, and to your staff, thank you for an outstanding job. You've done a really, really good job. Once again, I'm very thankful that we've cut the millage and retained as many services as possible, a lot. We've just dipped into reserves, that does give me heartburn, but based on our conversation earlier, you expect that we're going to have money left over that rolls into this budget that provides more stabilization, and you're comfortable with that. So, my only disappointment in this budget is that the clerk of the court asked for two IG positions, very important, we've never denied a constitutional officer that has asked for something. In this case, it was flagged, and what that means is it should come back to the board for discussion, and I don't remember that ever happening. So, I, again, I'm upset that the process wasn't honored, I'm upset that we're not giving a constitutional officer what she needs in order to audit the finances of this county government, and I just want to say that for the record, we should be providing those two positions.
I distinctly remember a full-page article on the back of the Bradenton Herald, it was a letter from a former constitutional officer, Brad Stube, and his taking issue with millions upon millions of dollars that were denied him when he was a constitutional officer.
Yep.
So, more fake news from the right side of the dais.
Well, hold on a second there, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I wasn't a commissioner when Brad Stube had that problem.
You said never. You used the word never.
Okay, well, excuse me.
Okay.
Excuse me, during the Great Recession, there was that issue, correct? I was not a part of the board at that time, but I'm sorry, it's wrong not to fund these positions, it's needed, and again, this is a political move, that's not right.
Dr. Hopes, would you like to make a comment before we move forward with the motion?
Yes, I would just like the public know that this board hires the financial auditors for Manatee County Government, and that is CRI, they are fully funded, and the finances of this organization are audited by outside auditors.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm having Leslie put the motions up, the first motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Whitmore.
I'm sorry, I turned my thing off, but the CRI that he was just talking about, I remember finding that in the budget, the monies that we're paying to do our housing and stuff, we've hired, acquired them, we still have like a million something left in that, and we're paying three hundred thousand to them to administrate it. We got a memo from Lee Washington on that, so I don't know if you all saw it, but.
Correct, yes.
So, they're not cheap.
Commissioner Baugh, Leslie, you're working on the motions, Commissioner Baugh, you're the last one on the board, ma'am.
I wanted to go ahead and just take this moment to talk to staff and to the county administrator, the deputy county administrators that are in this room, I don't see Courtney, is she here?
I don't believe she has kids.
I don't see her. I just want to say that I think, you know, and I think that the majority of commissioners would agree, that you all have done a fabulous job on the budget this year, you answered all the questions that I had, I had several briefings, it went extremely well, and no, we don't, we can't do everything that everybody wants, but, you know, when you look at where the money goes, one of the most important, if not the most important, is our sheriff, and, you know, with the population growth that we've seen, it's been very important to make sure that they're funded. So, I just wanted y'all to know how much I think the majority of this board appreciates all the hard work, the dedication, and you guys are just awesome, and we're so honored to have you here, so I just want to make sure I had a moment to tell you that.
I think it's the entire board, too, we all appreciate what Commissioner Baugh said.
Okay, so first, Leslie, what we want to have on there is, the motions are going to be A, they fall under item number seven, and it will be A, B, and C, and then the fourth motion will be item number eight, if that helps. So, the first motion will be the announcement of the millage rate information and adoption of resolution for ad valorem millage rates for fiscal year twenty-two through twenty-three. If you want to abbreviate that on the screen, you can simply type, but.
Can you bring up the first motion?
Approve ad valorem millage rates.
And the voting?
Can somebody read us?
Chairman, if I may, they have to be read in a specific format?
And they will be, and they will be, I'm just getting it up on the screen first.
For the vote.
For the votes.
Okay. What the hell just happened there?
I don't know.
Hold on, she's, it wasn't the correct wording, she's getting the wording down.
Got the motion.
Mr. Chair.
While she's doing, while she's doing that, Mr. Clegg, why don't you read the motion that you want and the wording that you wanted, and then someone can say so moved.
Sheila, would you prefer, or Sheila can read the motion? I'll be happy to do it if you'd rather I do it.
Yeah, let's just.
I'll do it. Okay, I move to adopt resolution B dash twenty-three dash zero zero four, adopting the ad valorem millage rates for fiscal year FY twenty-two, twenty-three annual budget.
So moved, second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Baugh, and a second by Commissioner Satcher. We've held public comment, there are no one is on the board, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Madam Clerk, that motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Clegg, you read letter B.
Yes, sir, are you ready, Madam Clerk? Okay, I move to adopt resolution B dash twenty-three zero zero five, adopting an annual budget for FY twenty-two dash twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whitmore to approve, and a second by Commissioner Satcher, we've held public comment, there are no commissioners on the board to speak, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Madam Clerk, that motion passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Mr. Clegg.
Yes, sir, I move to adopt resolution B dash twenty-three dash zero zero six, adopting the final budget for dependent special taxing districts of the Board of County Commissioners for FY twenty-two dash twenty-three.
So moved.
Second. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Satcher to approve, and a second by Van Austinbridge, Bridge. We've held public comment. There are no commissioners on the board to speak. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Madam Clerk, the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Clegg?
Yes, sir. I move to adopt Resolution R-22-156, adopting the five-year FY '23 to '27 capital improvement plan for NCIP, closed print, and a policy regarding the administration of the five-year CIP.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Whitmore, second by Commissioner Satcher. We've held public comment. There are no commissioners on the board. We will vote at this time. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Madam Clerk, that motion also passes unanimously. Commissioners, is there anything further?
You have to announce the bottom.
We are now going to, we are now going to close the public hearing.
Chairman?
Oh, you want to read the whole thing? Okay, everybody calm down. Sheila, go ahead and read that for us, please.
I have to announce a per trime.
Your statement.
The Manatee County aggregate millage rate for fiscal year '22-'23 is 6.62, 6832 mils, and the change from the rollback aggregate millage rate of 6.4344 mils for the operating millage is hereby determined to be a positive 3.87%.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now close the public hearing, and we're adjourned.